I count for a corner. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Government Center. I apologize to you, we ran a little bit late in a pre-commission meeting and trying to work on one of the agenda items. In fact, the agenda item that was going to be item R, I think, on our agenda tonight, has been tabled in the pre-commission and will not be discussed here tonight. So if you were here to talk about trash, we've tabled that, but we are going to allow a couple of folks that have been here waiting their turn to at least speak to us about that. But if you're waiting for the vote, or this, that, or the other, we have tabled that item and are not going to take that up. But let's go ahead and get started now, as we typically do with our meeting, again, with apologies for starting at thirteen minutes or so after six, as opposed to starting at six on the nose. But we always want to start with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Tonight Scott Dickinson from the First Baptist Church is going to give us our invocation, and then we'll be led in the pledge of allegiance by Boy Scouts that are here with us tonight. So would you stand, please, as you are able, for the invocation and pledge of allegiance? Scott, can I call on you to give us the invocation?
Would you pray with me? Living God, who we know by many names and through many experiences, we ask your blessing on us this evening and the community and communities we represent. First of all, we gather in a spirit of gratitude. We give you thanks for the breath you put in our lungs this morning, for the many signs of your presence you have surrounded us with throughout this day. We only hope you have given us eyes to see them. For the opportunity to gather with others whose lives we share in as members of this community, some whom we know and others we do not yet know, we thank you for each of them and for all of them, for the concern they have for our common life together and their desire to do what is in their power to better it for all. We thank you that we live in a community and a nation that offers these freedoms to participate in the political process and invites all who would to share in this important work. We thank you also for all those whom we have called to lead us in these things, for our mayor and our county commissioners, for their staffs, and all the many who support them in so many different ways. For their service and generosity of spirit, we give you thanks, oh God. For all of these things and our many blessings which are too numerous to name, we give you thanks. And now we ask that you would fill this room with your presence and our hearts with your love for you and for our neighbor. Give us wisdom and clarity as we seek to speak in the truth together. Give us compassion to consider the needs of those most vulnerable among us and ask what voices need to be heard who are not here. Give us humility that we might see each other in our best light. Help us to appreciate our differences, oh God, but not see them as insurmountable obstacles to be overcome. Instead, may the diversity of opinion in this room and in our community inspire us to creativity and open us up to new insights and broader, more generative paths forward. And finally, give us patience as we once again commit ourselves to our common life together for the long haul. We're mindful of the suffering in our community, oh God, and those in communities around our country and our world. Help us through small but sacramental gestures of kindness and generosity to one another this evening. Model the civility we long for in our larger circles of community. Holy God, let us live as if all the good that must happen in our community and in the world depends on us, but sleep as if it all depends on you. And for our time together this evening, help us remember that the truth of these things lies somewhere in between. Bless our time together and bless the ties that bind us with each other and with you and with all people and all things. It is in your holy name that we pray this. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Want to say thank you again to Scott Dickinson for being here with us and for leading us in that invocation. Thank you, Scott. Scott is the pastor at First Baptist Church, and we're delighted that he was here with us tonight. Pledge of allegiance was led by scouts from Boy Scout Troop Ten, and we appreciate them very much for being here, leading us in the pledge of allegiance, and wish them good luck in their scouting adventures and on the road to Eagle. So thank you very much for that. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes, and we have minutes of the pre-commission meeting of August the twenty-first, the regular commission meeting of August the twenty-first, and the special call meeting of August the sixteenth that have been prepared and distributed. Any changes or corrections or additions? If not, can I get a motion to approve all three sets of minutes? Commissioner Wynn. Second by Commissioner Shepherd. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the three sets of minutes? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. The ayes have it, and those three sets of minutes are approved. There are no invited guests and no presentations to be made tonight, but we're delighted that each and every one of you are here with us in Government Center and to observe Macon Bibb County Commission in action. Again, I apologize for the late start to the meeting, but thank you for your patience. Next item on our agenda, public comments on agenda items. And true to my word, Susan Cable was here waiting patiently to talk to us about the trash issue and waited for an hour, and even though that's not on the agenda, Susan, let me call on you and recognize you for five minutes if you'd come to the podium and talk to us about this, what was an agenda item but which we've tabled.
I'm glad I attended the meeting tonight. I learned a lot of things that I didn't know, but I'm still going to make my comments. I want to tell everybody that I appreciate the work you're doing. It's not easy being an elected official, but you're valuable to our community. I came to Macon in nineteen sixty-seven as a Mercer student and met my husband, married, raised our two daughters, and now I am so thankful that I live in Macon, Georgia, and I call it home. I also know that there's a reality in that people don't really keep up that much with commission resolutions, school board educational standards, or water decisions. But they do want each one of these to work. I'm here today because I believe my city, for a number of months now, and now it's even going to go on a little bit longer, has let down its citizens. And I'm going to give you some examples that I know all of you have heard from your constituents, but this is my constituent, my ninety-three-year-old mother. She placed all her waste, her yard waste, in two containers marked for yard waste. After calling numerous times, it took advanced disposal, not four weeks, not two weeks, not four weeks, but six weeks to come and pick up her yard waste. Her containers sat on the grass for six weeks and killed all the grass below the containers. Her yard waste then accumulated in another spot that she had to keep because she couldn't put it in her containers because they were filled and sitting on dead grass. And this is not an isolated solution. This has actually happened to my mom twice. It is my understanding, from what I heard tonight, that Macon Bibb has a contract with advanced disposal to pick up yard waste. But after talking with yard waste, excuse me, with advanced disposal a number of times, I was informed by the people who answered the phone who said that they had told the city that they did not have the truck capacity or employees to meet the assignment. So my first question is, who assigned yard waste to advanced disposal with advanced disposal saying publicly, I called, and it's also been on the internet, that they could not fulfill this assignment nor do the job in any timely fashion? Concerning the company, I got from the committee that they really aren't, I guess maybe, I was really thinking they were the big problem, but now you all know from the last meeting what the big problem is, that you've got to come up with a decision that works best for everybody. But I would like to know, in dealing with them, should they get the contract, whether it's they do all three or they do just a couple of them? With yard waste, how long will it take advanced disposal to have equipment and employees ready to start the process of cleaning up all the yard waste across the city? And will the public be notified about this? There's lots of people disgruntled because they do not understand what is going on, and that is part of the problem, not getting that information out to them. And then I want to know, is advanced disposal then going to be required to pick up yard waste weekly? Now, I'm not sure about this two cubic feet, but I can tell you, in the fall, you're going to have a lot more bags than you are in the spring. And so you've got to be thinking about two cubic feet might be great, you know, in the winter maybe, or in the spring, but yard trimmings and other things in the fall will be a lot more than maybe six bags or whatever the bag proposal you talked about. Then I want to know, will there be a trial and inspection period to ensure that advanced disposal has met the requirements of picking up the yard waste? Because they have it right now. The assumption out in the community is, why were they given it and they haven't been able to do it? And so I think they want assurance that they're going to have something that's going to work for them. If advanced disposal can't meet the terms of the contract concerning yard waste, can that part of their contract be voided so that a new company might have the opportunity to bid on yard removal? This is a solvable problem that has much to do with how our community is viewed by visitors, tourists, and potential businesses. Decisions were made or not made, it seems like now, months ago, that were not made in the best interest of our community. As my mama used to say, you can tell how a house is kept on the inside by how it looks on the outside. People could say our community house is, right now, a big mess inside, and our neighborhoods look like another tornado came through them.
Thank you, Ms. Cable.
It is our hope and issue this will be resolved quickly. Thank you.
You are very kind. Thank you very much for being in for your patience. We appreciate you being here. Next Jake Pharoah, you're recognized for five minutes. Want to talk about the senior recreation center, I believe.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the council members. I have several initiatives identified, not just for the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center, so I'm just going to focus on that one topic. I probably have twelve or thirteen that I've mentioned before. Could elaborate on all of them, but I won't. I've been doing some research on how to manage and operate public facilities like recreation centers, parks, and so forth, and there's a lot of experience throughout the entire country. Many communities have partnerships that are formed between public entities and private entities, namely nonprofit groups, that will operate and manage parks, recreation facilities, and other entities. You could name several others that we do have now that could easily fall into the same area. Public parks, private partner relationships, there are several books on that topic. It's a great way to involve the community, get the community involved, form a board, have really distinct, well-thought-out objectives for the recreation center, and we could operate and manage that center and other centers as well. But also, the city does not lose control of the park, the recreation center. It still has ownership and also the responsibility for any capital improvements and so forth and so on. So there's a relationship, a partnership, that's very, very critical. I've been involved in two or three in my lifetime, and they work out extremely well, owned by the city or owned by the township or whatever, and managed and operated by a great committee of volunteers that manage it, operate it, cover the costs and so forth, and they do a really good job. There's so many great examples. So I encourage you to take a look at that, and I think it would be a great help for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pharoah. And I misspoke. It was not the senior recreation center, but the South Bibb Recreation Center, South Bibb Recreation Center, which is on the agenda for tonight. Got Mr. Curry wants to talk to us about the senior center, and that's a non-agenda item, so I'll call on you a little bit later, Mr. Curry. Is that right? Oh, and item G. I beg your pardon, overlook the G. Item G is a Splot project for the road program.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good evening.
Evening, evening, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I want to talk about the Forest Hill Road project.
Yes, sir.
Forest Hill Road project was, in the beginning, it was named the north-south corridor, where it was going to run from Forest Hill Road down Park Street through down Hollingsworth to Log Cabin, around Bloomfield to Pine On. It was going to be a corridor to alleviate some of the traffic. Back in them days, I think they were looking forward to people being able to get to the base quicker from the north, and that was going to be the corridor that was supposed to alleviate the traffic. So I'm thinking back then, it's probably, I stand to be corrected, probably was in the early nineties, maybe ninety-four or somewhere, they had like forty million dollars to do this project. Okay? So what happened somewhere along the way, people on Forest Hill Road didn't actually want the project. So they skipped Parks, they skipped Hollingsworth, they skipped Log Cabin, and they jumped up to Robbins Federal Credit Union and Furlane, that DOT, Furlane, that all the way back round through Bloomfield to Pine On. Okay, so I guess time, progress, and everything fought it down on Forest Hill Road where they actually, I don't know, they ran out of money, ran out of fight or whatever, but they submitted and they did the Furlane on Forest Hill. Okay, now, I was told that Forest Hill Road was temporarily made to be a state road so that they could receive the funds, to get all the funding that they get. And I'm looking at paperwork here now where you're talking about five hundred and ninety-four more thousand. And when I looked at the project in the poor neighborhood, Log Cabin project, I don't know what happened to the Hollingsworth Road, Parks Avenue, Park Street part of the project. I've been down here before and said this before. It was just, in other words, what happened was, you know, I used to tell you about the people walking in the gutters, trying to play in Russian roulette, trying to get across the little bridge down on Log Cabin. So my commissioner, which is Commissioner Tillman, I'm in the ninth district, it was already in the works, but he put forth for effort to get something done in that area, where you put a little sidewalk over there and no curves and gutters, where like on Forest Hill Road, you've got curves, gutters, a hundred and fifty new streetlights, the whole nine yards, and now you're still talking about another hundred and fifty-some thousand, where it's now on Log Cabin, the water is back running in the road because it can't get in the gutter now, it's running even more in the road when it rain. We have no additional streetlights. The bridge is there, it's starting to develop a hole back in the little bridge, which is about a hundred years old, and the pedestrian bridge has no lights still. Two years later, I talked to my commissioner about this a year and a half or more ago. And it's just so much disparity between the haves and the haves not in this city, and depending on where you live, depending on the quality of service and the quality of life that it seems like going around this little circle here produce. I don't see no reason in the world why Log Cabin drive, the water have to be running down in the road, and the little bridge still about to wear off. Car ran off the bridge, well, hanging off the bridge, knocked a chunk out by from me to you, Mr. Mayor, still out. Still no lights on the bridge, people walking in the dog, water running in the road. So it just baffles me to realize that if you don't say nothing, you all don't do nothing. If you say something, you all don't do nothing. So I don't know what the solution is. I talked to my commissioner about the project. I don't know how you temporary make a road, a state road, so you can get DOT to do their part and don't do the whole project. Like I said, they skipped Log Cabin in the area where the poor people live. That's why the traffic ballin' neck up at Robbins Federal, because that's supposed to have been Furlane. So they playing Russian roulette up there when they turn off of Mercer between CVS and Walgreen to try to get in that little one-lane structure, one-lane project right there. So I'm just alone with the people, just frustrated with the way you all handle business, Mr. Mayor. You know, look like in some areas you have and in some areas you have not, but it all was supposed to be the same north-south corridor with the forty million dollars. It's always a disparity, not one time, not two time, the majority of the time, you all don't do right in the poor neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments, sir. Next, Mr. Randy Stevens wants to talk to us about South Bibb Recreation Center. Mr. Stevens, thank you very much for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. Some of you may remember, I was the tennis director for the city of Macon from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-seven. When I came here, John Drew Smith Tennis Center on the north side of town was a new tennis center. Been there five years, but it was, we were taking in a lot less in court fees than we were spending on salaries and wages and upkeep at the facilities at that time. So we had to try to look at ways to reduce expenses and increase the income, and we checked around at other public tennis centers around the state. Our court fees are about the same as everyone else's, so we needed to look for other ways. So we reduced expenses, but what we decided we would do was bring in large tennis tournaments to Georgia, I mean, to Macon, that might have an economic impact on them. So we got involved in the political system, you know, I became president of USTA Georgia, then Mary Hatfield became the president of USTA Georgia, and then Donna Bailey began. And we had political clout at that point in time. We had Jamie Kaplan, who was Miss Tennis in Macon, that was respected throughout the state. So we were able to bring a lot of large tennis tournaments here. But now what's happened is, other cities have seen what's happened in Macon, and Columbus now has thirty-four tennis courts, Rome built, I mean, fifty-three tennis courts. Rome now has fifty-four tennis courts. I mean, you saw in the paper a couple of weeks ago, Atlanta's getting ready to build a facility in North Atlanta and Roswell that'll have a hundred and thirty courts. So it's really necessary for us in Macon to have a large tennis center in South Bacon to complement what we have at John Drew Smith Tennis Center, so we can continue to bring these tennis tournaments here and at least keep the ones we have also. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. We appreciate you being here, and thank you very much. Mr. Willie Frazier wants to talk to us about Blight. We've got a couple of items on the agenda about Blight. Mr. Frazier? Thank you for being here, sir. You're recognized for five minutes.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. Glad to see you all again. I stand here today because I want to talk about Blight. I looked at this and I seen the word blight on here so much, and I recognize what blight mean. But in my meaning of blight, until we get to a certain place with blight, blight to me mean destroy and try to rebuild. One thing that I'm about, I'm about not only destroying and rebuilding, but I'm about preserving. And the more I see blight, I recognize that it's destruction because the other day I was at the Tenneheys reunion. I saw a whole lot of people, feel Central City Park up down there, but I remember what Tenneheys used to be because I used to live there. Tenneheys is no more. It's now called Bills Hill. All that stuff that down Plant Street, there are other centers and stuff like that that's being built, and the people that used to live all up and down Plant Street, Feltown Homes, all those areas, now they're meeting down in Central City Park just to remember what they were. That is the biggest reason why I stand for Pleasant Hill and different other areas, because I'm tired of seeing them destroyed. Then we have to go somewhere else to remember what was. That won't no longer happen. I'm going to stand for it with everything that's in me because no more will we be destroyed and be displaced. Them people down there enjoying, they're having a big time, but Central City Park ain't Tenneheys. I see the same thing happening in Pleasant Hill. I see the same thing happening in other areas of Macon because I see destruction coming through, for whatever reason and whatever structure, is it really for the area that it's in? Where do we go and where do we lead to? Where do blight lead to? How do all these things fix everything else that we're all about? These are historical areas. These are historical societies, and history means something. If you don't know your history, eventually you will be lost, and you don't understand why we have a lost city. Our kids are killing one another. Our city is being destroyed. Everywhere is dissipated and dilapidated and look like trash and garbage no more. I'm going to push to see Macon be built back into what it was that I used to brag about all the time, because I still intend to brag about Macon, every area of Macon. I'm going to start in Pleasant Hill, and I'm going to go from Pleasant Hill to South Macon, then I'm going to go from South Macon to East Macon, and from East Macon to North Macon. But Macon will be what it used to be again. You see, one thing about it is, I like what Macon is. I worked it for the Board of Education, and I got a chance to work with special needs children. I don't have that job anymore. The Board of Education don't realize what it had in me. I got a fire and a determination like nobody knows. This city don't understand what it has in me. You got a person that love this city and care about everything in this city, and I'm going to give my all to make sure that it happen, even if I got to do it by myself. Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. That's all of the comments on agenda items that we have. Those people that signed up to talk to us about a non-agenda item will be called on later in the meeting. Next item on our agenda, reports from outstanding committees, and first would be Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, and took the following action. The committee heard a report from the chief financial officer regarding the general fund, solid waste fund, vehicle maintenance, enterprise, and Splot funds. The committee approved the following: agreement and order of consent in the matter of Armstrong World Industries Superfund Site and authorized payments for up to sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and the Macon Naval Ordinance Plan Superfund Site and authorized payments of seventeen thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-five cent. The committee approved the transferring of eight thousand dollars from the District Attorney's Small Equipment and Improvements Line item to cover a temporary law clerk's salaries and benefits. The following Splot projects were approved: the issuance of a solicitation for the design and installation of a new marquee at the Douglas Theater; the appropriations of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars for sheriff's vehicles; the appropriations of five-hundred-sixty-four dollars and nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, excuse me, for the Forest Hill Road; the appropriations of two-hundred-sixty-four-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars for Sardis Church Road and Sagota Road Project; and the appropriations of four-million-four-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars for the Phase Two construction of South Macon Bibb Recreation Center. This concludes the report of the Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next committee is Economic and Community Development, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, and took the following action. The committee approved the following appointments: Fred Snell, M.D., Albert Abrams, and Robert Rickert as a slate of nominees to succeed Dr. Fred Snell on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board. We also approved Jim Adams, Steve Kruger, and Eric Manson as a slate of nominees to succeed Jim Adams on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board. We also approved Andrew L. Galloway to the River Edge Community Service Board for a three-year term from July one, twenty eighteen, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The committee heard updates from the Middle Georgia Regional Commission regarding the twenty-twenty census, the Urban Development Authority regarding Rosa Park Square, and we want to add a note there that the Urban Development Authority will hold a meeting with the Friends of Rosa Park Square to discuss park improvements. That meeting will be scheduled very soon, so be on the lookout for that. We also heard an update from Home First- We also heard an update from Home First and from Keep Macon Bibb Beautiful. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Uh, next, uh, committee is the Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepard. Chairman Shepard?
Short report. Uh, the Public Safety Committee met on August twenty-eighth also and took the following action. We heard a report from Attorney Michael McNeil regarding the ordinance and laws which govern taxi cabs, Uber, and Lyft in our community. This concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Shepard. And, and the final report is from Facilities and Engineering, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Facilities and Engineering met August twenty-eighth. Talked about two items. The committee approved the negotiation and/or condemnation of thirty-nine seventy Grand Avenue. And number two, the committee endorsed the concept of the twenty-eighteen Leadership Macon Class Project, which will include destruction, removal of several blighted properties. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is the consent agenda, alcohol beverage license request. There was, uh, one alcohol beverage license, uh, request submitted by Mr. V.B. Patel, uh, doing business as Pearl Twenty-Twelve LLC or the Sitgo Food Mart at sixteen eighty-one Rocky Creek Road. Uh, the application is for beer and wine packaged sales to go at that location. And it was accompanied by the certificate of the sheriff on a satisfactory background check, a business development services for the correct amount of fees being paid, the ads that ran in the Macon Telegraph, along with the certificate of zoning compliance and the distance measurement form, uh, by the county engineer. Or to say that it met all of the distance requirements from other, uh, prohibited structures. Uh, the committee of the whole, uh, recommends approval of the request of beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the issuance of the license as requested signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the license will be issued as requested. Um, the next item, uh, on the agenda then is old business. Um, and the first item of old business, uh, is a resolution, uh, to approve the use of condemnation to acquire the property at thirty-nine seventy, uh, Grand Avenue, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the negotiations and our condemnation proceedings for blight at three-nine-seven-oh Grand Avenue, Macon Bibb County, Georgia, and for other legal purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is a settlement agreement in connection with one of two superfund sites, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the administrative settlement agreement and order on consent for remedial investigation feasibility study in the matter of the Armstrong World Industry Superfund Site and to authorize a settlement payment of up to sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? May Pro Tim tell me?
These are certain items that I wish we would explain more detail to the public, that this goes all the way back to military days. And there's so many folks that have worked at Armstrong, that have suffered from cancer, and who would never recoup the money that we're not discussing here. But it goes all the way back to the military days where this site was never cleaned up. But this is a portion of what we're paying in Macon Bibb County to clean up, uh, uh, some of the damage that was done. And I think the military is paying a portion, and all of this is not in there. But I think this is a, a, a part of it. And there are just so many folks that have, uh, suffered from, uh, Armstrong, uh, and working out there. And they've signed waivers never to discuss this or never to sue this company. And this small amount that we're paying for the public, just, and most of us are not aware what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The companion resolution, uh, is a settlement in connection with the Macon Naval Ordinance, uh, plant. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the administrative settlement agreement and order on consent for remedial investigation and feasibility study in the matter of the Macon Naval Ordinance Plant Superfund Site and to authorize the settlement payment of seventeen thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is an ordinance to allow the district attorney to move a little bit of money around in his budget to, if, cover the expenses of a temporary law clerk, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of eight thousand dollars from the District Attorney's Small Equipment and Improvement Line Item to cover temporary law clerk salary, Medicare, and workers' compensation, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Uh, next is a resolution, uh, to procure, um, a solicitation or to solicit, uh, uh, procurement solicitation regarding a new marquee for the Douglas Theater, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission requesting the issuance of a procurement solicitation regarding the design, purchase, and installation of a new marquee at the Douglas Theater and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, item F, uh, is, is an ordinance, um, to, uh, uh, provide the funding to allow the sheriff to order some new vehicles, and I'll ask the clerk, uh, to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and forty thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars from the two thousand and seventeen splotch bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen splotch revenues from two thousand and eighteen Public Safety Sheriff Vehicles Line Item as shown on the two thousand and eighteen splotch project timeline and budget and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Item G, um, is another splotch appropriation of funds, uh, this, uh, for the Forest Hill Road, uh, item. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of five hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars from the two thousand and seventeen splotch bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen splotch revenues from two thousand and eighteen road and bridges, Forest Hill Road Line Item as shown on the two thousand and eighteen splotch project timeline and budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. One, one no. Uh, the ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted. Uh, next, uh, is an ordinance, uh, appropriating splotch proceeds for the Sardis Church Sagota Road, uh, Line Item. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred and ninety dollars from the two thousand and seventeen splotch bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen splotch revenues from two thousand and eighteen road and bridges, Sardis Church Road, Sagota Road Line Item as shown on the two thousand and eighteen splotch project timeline and budget and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance, uh, is adopted. Uh, going on, uh, item I, uh, is a, uh, resolution to award a contract to Warren Associates for the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a construction contract between Macon Bibb County and Warren Associates Incorporated in the amount of four million four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Phase Two construction of the South Macon Bibb Recreation Center to be paid by two thousand and seventeen splotch bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen splotch revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Uh, next is an appointment, uh, to, or slate, uh, of appointees for Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission submitting Fred Snell, M.D., Albert Abrams, and Robert Rickert as a slate of nominees to succeed Fred Snell, M.D. on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next, item K, uh, is a similar slate of nominees, uh, for the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission submitting Jim Adams, Steve Kruger, and Eric Manson as a slate of nominees to succeed Jim Adams on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is an appointment to the River Edge Community Service Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Andrew L. Galloway to the River Edge Community Service Board for a three-year term to run from July the first, two thousand and eighteen, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got one, one no. Uh, May Pro Tim? Uh, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, item M, uh, is an ordinance, uh, to amend our financial policies, and I'll ask the clerk to, to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the financial policies for the Macon Bibb County Consolidated Government to provide the financial officer with the authority to authorize transfers up to ten thousand dollars between budget line items within the personnel service component, which includes wages, salary, and benefits of departmental budgets and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Uh, the committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Got two no's. Commissioner Lucas and May Pro Tim? That, was that a no from you, sir? Okay. Uh, uh, two no's, but the ayes, one, two, uh, three, uh, four, five, uh, uh, five, five to two. Uh, so the, the ordinance is adopted. Um, the, uh, next item is item N, uh, which is a resolution, uh, to help us, uh, sell the fire station on, uh, Forsyth Road. Um, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to sell the fire station property located at four oh-six-five Forsyth Road and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Uh, item O is a similar, uh, resolution to authorize the sale of, of portion of, uh, vehicle maintenance facility at one-eight-one Lower Bay Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to sell that property located behind Macon Bibb County's vehicle maintenance facility at one-eight-one Lower Bay Street and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction and for other purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution, uh, is adopted. Item P is a similar, uh, resolution to authorize the sale of, of the Macon Baptist, uh, Association property, formerly owned by the Macon Baptist Association. And I'll ask the clerk to read that, uh, by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to sell the former Macon Baptist Association property located at ten-eighty Second Street and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, next is item, uh, Q, uh, which is, uh, to, uh, allow the, um, it's an extension of the agreement with the Urban Development Authority relating to property at five oh-six Hawthorne Street. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority related to the transfer of five oh-six Hawthorne Street so as to extend the term through December the thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and for other purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Um, the, the final, uh, item, uh, item R, uh, was tabled, uh, in pre-commission and will be taken up, uh, next week, next Tuesday, um, on the eleventh, is that right?
Yes, sir, on the eleventh.
Sep- Tuesday, September eleventh, beginning at nine o'clock a.m., when we have committee meetings next Tuesday morning. Uh, so that takes us then to new business. Um, and we have several items of new business, uh, that have come down from the county attorney's office. Item A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant, uh, from the Middle Georgia State University and the United States Department of Justice, Project Safe Neighborhoods Program in an amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand and ninety-four dollars with no local match to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a national integrated ballistics information network system and to promote educational efforts aimed at reducing gun crimes and gang membership. And I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Actually, with no local match, uh, it might, might ought to go to Public Safety, shouldn't it? Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send that to Public Safety rather than Operations and Finance. I'm gonna refer that to Public, Public Safety for further study. Uh, item B, uh, is a resolution adopting, uh, a Title VI Compliance Policy and Plan. I'm gonna refer that, uh, to the Operations and Finance Committee for further study. Item C is a resolution, uh, a Title VII Compliance Policy and Plan. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item D is a resolution adopting a limited English proficiency policy and plan. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item E is an ordinance approving and authorizing the appropriation of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from the twenty-seventeen splotch bond proceeds and/or the twenty-eighteen splotch revenues from twenty-eighteen Cultural and Recreation Smart Lake Park Line Item as shown on the twenty-eighteen splotch, uh, project timeline and budget. I'm gonna refer that, uh, to the Operations and Finance Committee. Now, item F, uh, is a resolution repealing the Macon Bibb County Pre-Approval Authorization for applicants seeking to participate in the Heartbeat Incendi Program administered by the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Uh, item G is a resolution to authorize the, the mayor to execute the termination of the Intergovernmental Agreement related to Macon Bibb County's lease of the Little Richard House to the Macon Bibb County Community Enhancement Authority. I'm gonna refer that to the committee of the whole. Uh, item H is a resolution approving and adopting the Macon Bibb County Five-Year Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvements, uh, Element Update. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item I is a resolution to authorize and direct the blight consultant to provide project management services related to the blight remediation project of the Leadership Macon Class of twenty-eighteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Economic and Community Development, uh, Committee. Development Committee. Item J is a resolution to provide notice that Macon Bibb County does not intend to include funding in the FY twenty twenty budget for those organizations identified in Exhibit A. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item, Item K is a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept the conveyance from the Georgia Department of Transportation of two hundred and forty-five point one-five acres located along the west bank of the Oak Muggie River to provide for the Oak Muggie Heritage Trail Extension. I'm gonna refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Item L is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with White Way Development Corporation Doing Businesses, Appling Brothers Company for the installation of a filter blanket to repair seepage problems along the Macon levee in an amount of eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars payable from contract services for FY twenty nineteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an application with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the purpose of, of applying for state allocated funds to be used for the paving and maintenance of public roads under the twenty nineteen Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, authorizing the acceptance of said funds and the required local match of thirty percent in the estimated amount of six hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents to be paid from twenty seventeen SPOLOSP bond proceeds and/or twenty eighteen SPOLOSP revenues should said application be approved, and authorizing additional county funding in the estimated amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-five cents to be paid from the twenty seventeen SPOLOSP bond proceeds and/or twenty eighteen SPOLOSP revenues to complete the list of road projects attached here, too. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is Item N. It's an ordinance to appropriate an additional forty thousand dollars of BLIT bond funds from District Two for the Edgewood Avenue, Telfair Street BLIT project. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Next is Item O, which is a resolution to authorize settlement in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars related to the claims of Iris Mindy Walker for damages for trespass to real property known as twenty seventeen Walker Swamp Road, Macon Bibb County, Georgia, and for the, the removal of dirt from said property. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item P is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to an agreement with Correct Health Bibb LLC in the amount of approximately three million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents payable from the Sheriff's Office Correction Budget Medical Services and Mental Health Services Line Items to continue to provide medical and mental health services for inmates of Macon Bibb County and the Bibb County Sheriff's Office from July the first, twenty eighteen, through July the thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item Q is an ordinance to amend Ordinance Zero dash eighteen dash double oh three zero to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of BLIT bond funds from District Three, Six, and Seven BLI- BLIT Funds plus two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and fifty-four cents in twenty seventeen SPOLOSP bond funds and/or twenty eighteen SPOLOSP revenues from the BLIT remediation BLIT Bond Number Two Line Item for funding of the West Macon Baseball Field Improvements. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. And finally, Item R is a resolution to request the county managers to provide a cost-benefit analysis for review by the commission related to decreasing the operations of the Macon Bibb County Solid Waste Landfill to the minimum level required by state law and a cost-benefit analysis related to the early closure of the Macon Bibb County Solid Waste Landfill. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee as well. That's all of the new business that has been prepared thus far by the county attorney's office, and, and this will be on the agendas for the committees beginning next Tuesday at nine o'clock a.m. However, we do anticipate additional items coming down, so would urge you to review the agenda, which is published on Friday afternoon, and will include all of the items that come down during this week and that will be referred and possibly discussed at the committee meetings next Tuesday, September the eleventh, beginning at nine o'clock a.m. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. And there are a couple. Mr. Curry, let me call on you first, sir, 'cause you also wanted to talk to us, I think, about the senior center, or did you cover that in your previous comments?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I'm here in reference to the Senior Citizen Center. The last time I was here with the issue of the Senior Citizen Center, it was about the funding for the furnishing, which was, I think it topped out to be four hundred and thirty-five thousand. Since that time I was here about that issue, we have been moved from our location on Adams Street and relocated to Rosa Jackson Center. I'm assuming our time ran out with mercy with the contract that we had with them. So I think we was originally supposed to be in the new center in May, so we've been through May, and they said Ju- July, we haven't been through July. Now we on and on and on. Okay. I had to talk to Dr. Moffitt about the furnishing. I think he said it was already ordered. But another issue that I had is recreation. I heard a gentleman talk about the tennis court. I think in the original master agreement, they was talking about twenty-four tennis courts down South Bibb. And I'm trying to figure out. That's a lot of tennis. But another issue that I have with the recreation is that we had thirty-nine million dollars for recreation. And here we go again with the despair to the treatment, despair to treatment. In my area, which is District Nine, which is Commissioner Tillman's area, it butts, butts up to Commissioner Bibbin's area, okay? In that area, which is Butler Cross, Bellevue, Payne City, and Napier, we had a swimming pool at one time. When I talked to the director of the swimming pool, he said it was the most productive swimming pool in the area. He had to have five lifeguard. Some kind of way that went aw- went awry. You all let that go to waste, and it was covered over, did away with. So that kill out a crucial thing that the children needs to learn how to swim. Then you turn around, I think Commissioner Allen knows this better than maybe some of you all, you took and made the gym boxing. Well, we had other facilities that could have been boxing out, out at Bloomfield. You had the Gilliam Gyms, and you had Bloomfield Gym, plus forty-three acres of land. So over at Freedom Park, it looked like y'all systematically, on race, just put the people in the community out of that area. What happened then, you turn around and put up a little splash pad. You refurbished out, well, you refurbished and you put millions in the, the first phase. Now, you always go through these phases in, in the areas that you wanna go through and with. Now, in the first phase, you come up and you redid all Vine Ingram, the baseball fields, which, well, when I was coaching, you know, that thirty years ago, black youth wasn't even in that area. We got two or three now. And then when the, when the field is not occupied by Vine Ingram, the white children that come from north, bring the bats and balls and the beamers and the jags and all that stuff, play and go, the field is vacant. The poor children in the neighborhood has nothing. They peeping through the fence out of them. Okay? You kill out the little playground that was there for the younger children. To no avail, there's nothing there but a runoff pool. Okay? So when it get cold and in the hot, the children in, in that area have no inside facility. That is just, that's a disgrace. That's a shame. Out of thirty-nine million dollars, they went backwards. At one time, it had a gym for everybody, many of them just for young, old, and the new. Kill that out with boxing. Everybody don't box. Boxing is just a, you know about boxing. Okay? Then you cover up the swimming pool. So what I'm saying, in the neighborhood, you all just let that go for one group of people, the rich and famous, that come there and play and go. That's not right. I can't see that being right. We elected you all to serve all the people. So now, when it was cold last year and it hot this year, the children in that area have no inside facility. But yet, you're talking about twenty-four new tennis courts. How could that be fair? If you make a mistake, own up to it. That was a mistake to cove that gym out and make it boxing. Doesn't matter getting that equipment out, put it in the gym down on Bloomfield, and life goes on. Make it better for the children in that area. If it reversed, it wouldn't happen. The swimming pool over at Boogaty Washington didn't even open it up. Let DOT bring all their equipment up there and board it line up to the, to the facility. But that's in black neighborhood. It's not right, Mr. Mayor. I know the money gone, but the children still need help.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you too, Mr. Mayor. One love.
Ms. Chet Novak. Ms. Novak says she wants to talk to us about several items, and welcome, Ms. Novak. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
I'm gonna make this the commission's happiest day, because this is gonna be the last time I'm going to come here. Do you see how few people are, are out here, commissioners? That's because the commission does nothing. This is a one-way thing. You send us information, and we give you input, and you do nothing with it. And I'm gonna give you a whole bunch of examples. Number one, I am disgusted with the police department. You wanna know why crime is so rampant in Macon? It's because they do nothing, but complain about salaries and being understaffed. According to my records, my lookups, except for the secretarial positions, the average policeman makes about forty-seven thousand dollars a year. How many of these people out here make forty-seven thousand dollars a year? And I see them sitting around in their cars all the time parked, not working even. That's number one. Examples, I had a wallet stolen over a year ago. You know what they've done about it so far? Zero. I've talked to sergeants, lieutenants, majors, corporals, got promises, not a single thing is done. And I told them who did it. Same thing with the TV I had stolen and an air conditioner I had stolen. If the police don't like their salary, tell them to get the hell out of town. Go somewhere else and work. That's what I did. When I didn't like the salary where I was working, I quit and went somewhere else. Next thing, I almost had an accident on Jeffersonville Road, which I complained to the commission about, because there are dotted lines where there should be solid lines. And I almost got hit making a left turn into a road that had a dotted line. I talked to Nigel about it. I talked to the town manager. You know what happened? Zero. Not a single thing. A waste of my time. I complained for months about water leaks on Jefferson, on McCall Road, I mean, water running down the street from Broken Main. For months. You know who got it done? I did. And then after they did it, they butchered the road. Who got the road repaired made proper? I did. Not any of you people up here. So why do I come here and tell you about these things? I had damages to my house from a roommate. I had police officers, two of them, come out. One female police officer looked around and said, "Oh, there's no damages here." Well, heck, if it happened in her house, I'll bet you she'd say there was damages there. Broken lamps, curtains torn down, things thrown all over the place. And they did a lousy job of investigating. I asked them to come out. I told them the guy was mentally not right. They had a guy, an ambulance come out, and they said, "Oh, he knows what day it is, so he's okay." Well, you know what? He ended up finally going to a mental hospital, 'cause he was on drugs. He was shooting up drugs that he was supposed to be taking in pill form. That's the kind of investigation they did. Maybe if the police in this town did what they're supposed to do the proper way, all this crime that's going on, these people wouldn't feel like they have immunity. Maybe they'd start getting worried about getting caught and having something happen to them. Mr. Mayor, I went to you over a year ago, and I presented to you a program called the HUD two oh three K or FHA two oh three K program to help rehab houses in this town at absolutely zero cost to the town. All you had to do was publicize it. And the answer I got back was, "I already have it." Well, guess what, sir? There's only about forty people in this entire state of Georgia, hundred and six hundred and fifty-nine counties that are entitled to do this, and I'm one of them. And you never talked to me before that day, and you never talked to me after that. So no, you don't have it. You're losing, you're missing the boat on so much stuff here, 'cause you're blind to just spending money the way you wanna spend it. And the last thing, where the heck's this guy that sits here? He keeps walking in and walking out, walking in and out. I wanted to address him specifically tonight, because I sat here one night for over two and a half hours while we talked about his amendment to something, and then his amendment to his amendment, and we spent over half an hour clock, talking back and forth on that. And then he left before the public had a chance to speak about anything. I was extremely upset. I sat here crippled from my back operation, had to eat food, 'cause I'm a diabetic, but I sat here anyway, and he had the nerve to leave. I understand he may have some problems with some health issues with his family or whatever, but so do I have health issues. And if I can be here and I can wait while he's talking, he can sure as heck sit here and wait while I'm talking.
Thank you very much, Ms. Novak. We appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comments, sir.
Goodbye.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Novak. Next, Mr. Wade Horton. Wants to talk to us about the Transit Authority, Mr. Horton. Thank you very much for being here, sir. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Good evening. How y'all doing today? My comments are to you guys as well as to everybody who's listening by TV or other electronic device. Silver Right started with somebody sitting on a bus, and it has not stopped. I have been threatened that I was gonna be taken off paratransit because I'm coming out here speaking. Of course, they didn't say that, but was the reason. But I know it is, because I come to inform you of what, what's going on at the Transit Authority. I attend the meetings, and frankly, you need to know what's going on. You investing money, our money, to them. So, yeah, we need, you need to know what's going on. There is an effort by the Transit Authority to cut many, cut back on many routes. When the negotiation was going on about the funding, about the miller rate increase, they said they was gonna cut back the routes. The mall, but the route was gonna have two buses, and every other route that had two was gonna be cut back to one. Well, it's, it's gonna stay that way. And they're saying that it's gonna stay that way because y'all cut back on their funding. But we know that it's not on you guys. It's their fault. So what he's trying to do is he's trying to, uh, he gonna blame you guys and say that the service are being decreased because you cut back on money. But at the same time, he's adding routes, trying to figure out a way to add routes. And I'm talking about the CEO, Craig Ross, by the way. He's trying to figure out ways to add routes to the industrial park where Amazon is presumably coming, at the expense of people who live in poor neighborhoods, predominantly black neighborhoods. If you live in East Macon, you should be concerned, 'cause some of your routes are gonna be cut. Now, I'm probably gonna name some of y'all districts. If you live in the Moffett Road, Hollisworth Road area, you need to be concerned, 'cause some of the routes in that area is gonna be cut. You live in Pleasant Hill, you should be concerned, 'cause some of the routes are going to be cut. If you live in the Vineville area, or you frequent Zeppelin Road to go to Walmart, or go to the movie theaters out there, you should be concerned, because your route is going to be cut out completely on Saturday. That is the only area of town that has a theater, and you're gonna be cut off from it if your means of transportation is public transportation. It was stated that seventy-five, there was a seventy-five percent on-time performance for the fixed route, which is not good, and it dipped as a result of the buses being cut back on the routes. The effort of cutting back services in, in these neighborhoods, it's not due to finance. It's due to a way to try to improve the on-time performance of these buses without adding additional buses, because these buses would be transferred to another part of town. additional buses, because these buses would be transferred to another part of town. Mr. Craig Ross said that he advised y'all and told y'all that y'all, y'all were gonna have, y'all were gonna cause hardships to other people in this area, because you're cutting his budget. That simply is not true, because if his budget was so dire that you had to make cuts, why are you considering adding more routes? It's not y'all. But he's going to fix this narrative, so that you guys will be the ones who will be at fault. Now, there are some things that you guys have thought of. This is not one. You worked tirelessly and hard to come up with a means to fund these things, and he stated that when the budget is approved, if there is a military rate, it will be funded, and services to these areas will be restored. If you represent people in these areas, some of you represent these people in these areas who did not support the military rate increase. You should be alarmed, and I urge each and every one of you to attend and get your constituents in your areas to attend the board meeting and flood the board meeting. They're gonna have a public hearing there, and the public hearing room there is not big enough to accommodate people of this magnitude if they show up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horton. We appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments. Ms. Jackie Glover also wanted to talk to us, I believe, about the Transit Authority.
You're recognized for up to five minutes. Okay, good evening. I'm here to talk about the Transit Authority. And I know that there's a lot of stuff going on, and I know that you had to raise the military rate to get even what you got. Believe me, I really didn't want it, but I knew it was necessary, because my taxes went up, my military rate, I don't property in Macon also. What is happening here, y'all, we, y'all say that y'all want to improve our city, and everybody's saying that, but I say this every time I speak to anyone. If you have a city, and you do not have an effective transportation system, it is not gonna work. Your city is gonna go down, okay? It's good, okay? Downtown is great, okay? All right. So you're getting buses and everything for downtown, because that is happening. There are more buses that are gonna be downtown. But out in the areas where a lot of people really need these buses, they're being cut out. Now, I know, and I think this is part of the issue, they're putting the buses out, trying to put buses out where Amazon is gonna be, because Amazon is gonna hire five hundred people. I understand that. And part of Amazon thing is they want this out there. But you gotta take care of the people in the city. And see, a lot of people don't understand, you cut out these routes, a lot of people won't be here, because everybody can't live downtown. Everybody can't live downtown. And I would tell you, and this is a fact, I have told my associates who considered moving here, I told them, if you ain't got your transportation, I'm legally blind, and they're blind too. I told them, if they don't have the transportation. And a lot of them, I told them, if you don't already have a job, you don't need to look this way. Because what I feel here is not being, people not being accepted, okay? Now, I was reading today, and I saw where they're gonna, looking at putting, I think what's gonna happen is the shopping center over near my house probably gonna completely close down, because that's where Target used to be, and it's gone. But then they talking about putting Michael's, Old Navy, and another one out on the north side of town. And let me tell you, usually, and I hope I'm wrong, usually, wherever Marshalls and Old Navy and everything, all those kinds of stores wind up, Target wind up there. But see, you are not trying to keep people in the whole area. And so I guess, since we are not keeping it in the whole area, what's happening is we're gonna just let the buses leave the areas completely. But you know, people still have to get to work. And for them to cut those bus routes, where they're gonna have one bus on a route, where you go, it's gonna be an hour before these people can get to work, okay? And when you're doing that, that's horrible. It doesn't make any sense. And I'm gonna, I got one more thing that I'm gonna talk about, and I was so surprised when I heard this, that they, Mr. Horton, okay, you know, people don't like it when you telling them things that are happening in their house, okay? Mr. Horton has been riding paratransit for ten years or more, been staying in the same place, and you gonna come up with this you coming up with now? They could come on up with it. Bring it on. Because you know, it's ridiculous. The people in this town that's trying to help this town grow, they're getting slapped all upside the head, but you know what? That's not gonna stop it. It's still gonna happen. It's still gonna happen. Y'all need to realize that when I get ready to have fun, I don't stay here. I leave Macon. I go where my other friends are, because you know what? I could go anywhere that there's a bus system and ride paratransit. I could go anywhere where there's a bus system, and usually, that bus system is much better, because I can go get on that bus and be where I need to be in fifteen to twenty minutes, based on the way they are operating.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. We appreciate your comments. Thank you very much for being here with us tonight. Ms. Beverly Ming, want to talk to us about the Health Department? Ms. Ming? Thank you for your patience. You're recognized for up to five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Really, what I wanted to address the board about is flu season, this upcoming flu season is upon us. So I just wanted to make sure that I offer this service to our commissioners, but not only to the commissioners, but to our community. So I wanted to just let everyone know that the flu shots are available there at the Health Department, and I look forward to working with the commissioners, again, providing flu shots. But not only flu shots, there's a new vaccine called Shingrix, and I don't know if you all have heard of that vaccine. That's for shingles. Zostavax was the one that was previously and still being used, but Shingrix, based on research, has shown that it's more effective. It's two dosages for individuals fifty years of age and older. So we do offer that vaccine as well. And we accept various insurance, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Cigna, Aetna, Medicare, Medicaid, and also, I just wanted to let the commissioners, as well as those that are listening here and online, know that we do have those vaccines available.
Ms. Ming, thank you very much, and thanks
Thank you.
for what the Health Department does for all of us. We appreciate it. Finally, Mr. Donald Richardson, got some grassroots reflection. Mr. Richardson, always good to see you here, and glad you're well enough to be with us. You're recognized for up to five minutes, sir.
Okay, this is from the Book of Jeremiah, Chapter Six. O ye children of Benjamin, gather yourselves to flee out of the midst of Jerusalem, and blow the trumpet into core, and set up a sign of fire in Beth Heserim, for evil appears out of the north in great destruction. I have likened the daughter of Zion to a calmly and delicate woman. The shepherds with their flock shall come unto her. They shall pitch their tent against her roundabout. They shall feed everyone in his place. Prepare ye war against her. Arise, and let us go up at noon. Woe unto us, for the day goeth away, for the shadows of the evening are stretched out. Arise, and let us go by night, and let us destroy her palaces. For thus hath the Lord of hosts said, hew ye down trees, and cast a mount against Jerusalem. This is the city to be visited; she is wholly oppression in midst of her. As a fountain casteth out her waters, so she casteth out her wickedness. Violence and spoil is hurried in her. Before me continually is grief and wounds. Be thou instructed, O Jerusalem, lest my soul depart from thee, lest I make thee desolate, a land not inhabited. Thus saith the Lord of hosts, they shall thoroughly glean the remnant of Israel as a vine. Turn back thy hand as a great gatherer into the baskets. To whom shall I speak and give warning, that they may hear, behold their ears uncircumcised, and they cannot hearken. Behold the word of the Lord is unto them a reproach. They have no delight in it. Therefore I am full of the fury of the Lord; I am weary with holding in. I will pour it out upon the children abroad, and upon the assembly of young men together, for even the husband with the wife shall be taken, the aged with him, that is full of days. And their houses shall be turned unto others with their fields, and wives together. For I will stretch out my hand upon the inhabitants of the land, saith the Lord. For from the least of them even unto the greatest of them, everyone is given to covetousness; and from the prophet even unto the priests, everyone did it falsely. They have healed also the hurt of the daughter of my people slightly, saying, peace, peace, when there is no peace. Were they ashamed when they had committed abominations? Nay, they were not all ashamed, neither could they blush. Therefore they shall fall among them that fall. At the time that I visit them, they shall be cast down, saith the Lord. Thus saith the Lord, stand ye in the ways, and see and ask for what the old past wears the good way, and walk therein, and ye shall find rest for your souls. But they said, we will not walk therein. Also I will set watchmen over you, saying, hearken to the sound of the trumpet. But they said, we will not hearken. Therefore hear ye nations, and know, O congregation, what is among them? Hear, O worship, behold, I will bring evil upon this people, even the fruit of their thoughts, because they have not hearkened to my words, nor to my law, but rejected it. To what purpose cometh theirs to me incense from Sheba, and sweet cane from a far country? Your burnt offerings are not acceptable, nor your sacrifices sweet unto me. Therefore thus saith the Lord, behold, I will lay stumbling blocks before this people, and the fathers and the sons together shall fall upon them, and the neighbor and his friend shall perish. Thus saith the Lord, behold, the people coming from the north country, and a great nation shall be raised from the sides of the earth. They shall lay hold on bow and spear; they are cruel and have no mercy. And their voice roareth like the sea, and they ride upon horses, setting arrayed men for war against the old daughter of Zion. We have heard the fame thereof, our hands waxed feeble; anguish hath taken hold of us, and pain is a woman in travail. Go not forth into the field, nor walk by the way, for the sword is in enemy, and fear it on every side. O daughter of my people, gird thee with sackcloth, and wallow thyself in ashes. Make thee morning as...
Mr. Richardson, thank you very much for your grassroots reflections from the Book of Jeremiah. Very helpful. We've reached the end of our agenda for this evening, and no points of personal privilege on the, can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by commissioners, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.